The city of those were planning board meeting for February 5th, 2025. Before we get to any other items on the agenda, I want to, we have to elect officers. According to our ordinances, we're supposed to elect them every January. We didn't have a meeting last month, so we have to do it this month. So I will make a motion to select officers for the coming year.
Okay, second?
Yes.
You're going to vote to add, yeah.
What's that?
Vote to add it to the agenda and then you will discuss.
Okay.
Everybody in favor? Because it has to be unanimous. Okay. For chairman.
Are you asking us to nominate?
Well, I'm waiting for Rick.
I would nominate, what's his name, John Delio?
Second. Okay, did it? Okay, then yeah, yeah, okay. Any other nominations?
For vice chair?
Okay, yeah, we can do it all in one.
Okay, Rick Lyles?
Mike Hany for secretary.
Perfect.
Perfect, yeah, it works.
Okay, all in favor of those nominations?
Right here.
Okay. Okay, moving on to item number two, adoption minutes from the December 4th, 2024 regular meeting. I have one, just one minor thing on, I guess it'd be on page two, under the third bullet point, the extra suite, the extra spaces could be put on the Hilton Hotel site and transferred over to home to suites. Technically, that should be Hampton Inn.
I missed that one.
I have a comment on the minutes.
What's that?
On page three, the paragraph that starts with the word Langley, the third line towards the end, it said it would be a nice guy to sue. I'm pretty sure that means wanted to be used.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from the December 4th, 2024 regular meeting. All in favor? Okay. Item number three, preliminary plan review of the minor subdivisions. Entitled Lewis subdivision for applicant Skylar Lewis. Proposal is to construct a single family dwelling on a lot with an existing duplex rental property. The subject property is approximately 1.1 acre lot located at 24 Grandview Drive, tax map 15, Lot 211, in the neighborhood zoning district. Is there someone here representing the applicant?
Yes.
And you being?
Skylar Lewis.
Okay. Tell us why you want to do it.
I just want to build a single family home and I don't want to wait the five years.
Excuse me, five years?
Because I already have the duplex on the property and I've had it for a year, so I'd have to wait four more years to build the single family home unless I come do this procedure.
Ordinance, if it's three or more lots, based on, need to go to subdivision. I mean, you can wait four more years to build it, but that's based here for subdivision right here.
Okay.
So he's, there's upgrades to the septic system of the lot to be able to handle the additional dwelling unit. You have a question about that, Robert can answer them as well, but there's sort of, it's being upsized to be able to handle the three dwelling units. And then the driveway in, because they're serving three dwelling units, will be a private road for our ordinance, where if it serves more than two dwelling units, it's a road. The driveway is a road, so. But yeah, fire is okay with the emergency access, there's enough turnaround space in there for them. And again, it's three dwelling units, so the traffic should be fairly minimal for that road. But emergency access and septic were the two key things to make sure they were sued. Upgraded suitably for the project.
Now, from prior action on lots in that area, I mean, it was originally a subdivision put in by the King family, associated builders, and presumably there were deed restrictions. And we've dealt with those in the past on other splitting lots and stuff, so could you just kind of explain, because I know we've got some people here that probably are interested in what's going on?
Yeah, so this lot, in particular for this project, I don't know the full history, but at one point it was most recently owned by Birds, or it was in Conservation at least. I don't think Bird's Acre owned it, you can correct me on that, if Bird's Acre owned it, but it was in Conservation. Then there was a deal worked out where Skylar acquired the property and then received the proper authority and go ahead to remove the conservation easement that was on the lot, so that just became a, you know, normal house lot in the neighborhood zone. And so he's been building on and out. But this lot was never part of the original subdivision, it was part of the remaining land that associated builders owned. You know, I don't know the full history of how it got from associated builders to being Conservation, but it's now back out of Conservation and is a buildable lot, but does not come with the covenants that are within the subdivision that was created at the planning.
It looks like the tax map for that, I mean, prior to Mr. Lewis, apparently owned by Ralph Jordan, but he didn't build anything on it.
Correct.
I just have a couple, just a couple of little minor things. The septic design, it was a, page one was redone. Let me get to it. Okay, changing the type of application from first time system to replacement system. And on the redo of that page one, the date of 1325 was used. On all the other pages, the original application was all dated 1324. The only page that has a correct date is the new page one. I mean, that's a minor thing, but it should be, should be the same date.
So anyway, the project comes, if it's approved, comes to code, they'll have to make sure they get updated.
Yeah, they'll just submit to me an updated with their correct dates, but I imagine it'll all be the same.
Yeah.
So if I may?
Yeah, okay.
I wasn't clear when reading that in materials. Are we saying that you'll be using Skylar the existing septic system or expanding the one that you have now?
I'll be expanding.
Good.
Well, according to the plan?
It's pretty much a full redo.
Yeah, it's not actually, he's expanding it, but he's removing the existing leach field, and it says on the second page, not the cover page, but it shows the bird's eye view of the property in the plan, that they're shifting, they're shifting the leach field 90 degrees, expanding it, and the existing leach field is being removed and the soils and contaminated materials are being taken to a designated location that's safe to dispose by this sort of material. That's pretty standard for replacing.
I have a question on, strangely, on the septic design, because on, excuse me, on page two, it says existing 1,000 gallon tank needs to have either 1,500 gallon tank or 2,000 gallon tanks in a series. On page three, it shows just the 1,000 gallon septic tank connected to the new house.
Correct. I think there is a scaling issue because this, it also doesn't show the duplex, it would be down here somewhere on the page. So all it's showing you is the two inch pump line coming up from where the duplex is tanked would be. So what that third page is showing is just where the house would be and that house's new tank altogether.
But, so the current 1,000 gallon tank that serves the duplex?
Correct.
Will be hooked in to this new leach field?
Correct.
And would that appear on your final, I mean, I'm just thinking, it's not going to affect me, but down the road, you know, when you leave and somebody buys a house and then decides?
Correct. It does show, it does show both tanks, they're just on, it shows the existing tank, pump tank for the duplex on the second page, and then the third page shows the new tank, the new 1,000 gallon tank on the third page.
Okay, and I see over to the right, the two inch line?
Correct, yeah, and it shows a 1,000 gallon tank and then it has next to it a pump tank marked with a circle and an arrow. That's what it's referring to. It needs to have in a series or a 15 gallon, 1,500 gallon tank would be a pump tank, or the 2,000 gallon tanks in a series, one of them would be a pump tank, well, one of them would be a separate pump tank.
So it's, you're feeling that with this change, this would meet the necessary?
Oh, yeah. On the first page, it says the design flows 510 gallons a day, and I believe it's five bedrooms altogether.
Yes.
Three in the, three in the single family and then two in the, one each in the duplex. So it's usually 90 gallons a day per bedroom, so.
Oh, okay.
He has more than he needs, actually, technically.
Okay. Any other questions on the board? Rick?
My questions were about the septic system and those have been adequately answered already, so thank you for that.
Okay, glad we could help. Okay, I'll open it to a public hearing. If anybody here to address the board on this item, please come up to the podium, state your name and tell us what you're here for.
Well, so I'm a neighbor.
Okay, could you please come up to the podium? Let us know who you are. And this is a, you know, this is a preliminary hearing.
Yeah.
This item has to come back to the board one more time, so.
Okay. My name is Patty Bergstrom and I'm a neighbor and I'm not here to complain about it, I'm really here just to learn about it because I live in a subdivision and it's, and so I think what I learned today, and you can let me know, is that this property that we got a letter about is not really in the subdivision. So I guess I'm curious why we were asked to come to it, to this meeting, because it doesn't really apply to us.
No, I mean, so this is proper, or regular procedure for planning board projects is if you're in a butter within a certain radius of a project, you get a letter letting you know that the project's occurring.
Yeah.
And so it's just standard practice.
Right.
It's not necessarily because you're in the subdivision, it's just because you're nearby.
And it's not really a subdivision, am I correct? I mean, it's, are there going to be more, are there going to be more buildings built on it, more housing?
I don't know if that's the plan or not, but it's a subdivision now because by state law, whether you're splitting a lot, like the lot lines and creating more lots, or if you're just adding dwelling units to a lot, once you hit three, it becomes a subdivision. And so there's three dwelling units on this lot creating.
So is there room for more properties to go in there?
With setbacks and stuff, I mean, maybe it looks like you might be able to fit another building, but you have to be, you have to be able to fit neighborhood zone setbacks and everything, but the neighborhood zone density is 10 units per acre, so he has about an acre of land, so in theory you could fit 10 units on it.
We're kind of dealing with two subdivisions. He's technically establishing a subdivision because there's going to be three residences on that lot.
Yeah.
Years ago, the big subdivision was a subdivision that the King family.
Like where we live, yeah.
Most likely.
Yeah.
I don't remember off the top of my head, but there was probably 20, a good 20 or 30 lots that associated builders built in that subdivision, but there's some lots now on that road that were not included in that subdivision. This apparently is one of them.
I understand.
Because I know some of the houses that the King family did on associated builders, there's probably some restrictive covenants on those deeds. I mean, you probably have something in your deed. His lot was not included in that original subdivision, so it does not have those restrictive covenants.
Yeah.
And so, but now that there is a created subdivision, so if Skylar were to add additional units to the lot, they would come back to planning board because he'd be amending a subdivision. So you'd get another notice if he was adding another building to the lot.
But, I mean, I guess I can just say that it'd be nice not to have a big subdivision back there, but it doesn't sound like you're asking for that today, you're just asking for a house.
Correct.
Right there. But I don't know if I have any control over a big subdivision back there anyhow, right? Because it's not part of our subdivision.
Yeah, not through private covenants or anything like that. I mean, it's just like another private landowner has the right to do certain things on their land, and as long as he follows the zoning regulations.
Yeah. All right, well, thanks.
Okay.
I'm David Bergstrom, I live on Deerfield, I'm Patty's husband, I guess I just have some more general questions about this, but it seems like the neighborhood in general, and I don't know the specific line drawings and plans like that, but the neighborhood in general was based for single family dwellings, and I understand that this particular property was outside of that because it was owned by Bird's Acre. But would that property not be under certain zoning restrictions regardless, or would the city not annex it to be in a particular zoning area? I mean, are all bets off when that property changes hands, that that property could be used for any purpose whatsoever?
I'll answer that.
Yeah, so it is in the neighborhood zone, so it has a density limit that it has to meet, which again, it's 10 units per acre in our neighborhood zone throughout the city. And then there are very strict uses that it can have, which is mostly residential uses are allowed, you know, there's not a lot of commercial uses allowed in the neighborhood zone.
Yeah.
So those things still apply to the lot, it's just not bound by any like private covenants that the subdivision that you live in has to follow. It still has to follow all city zoning regulations for the neighborhood zone.
Right. Yeah. It just seemed, yeah, it just seems like an unusual process to, you know, because of this sort of historic situation that it ends up changing, perhaps changing the, you know, the general flavor of the neighborhood. I don't have a horse in this race, I'm just curious about the processes.
Yeah, I mean, again, like it's, you know, every subdivision in the city butts land that's not in that subdivision, so there will be lots that are near, you know, land that may not necessarily have the same character or flavor as that neighborhood in particular, but I guess this is one of those times where it's not bound, you know, it has residential uses on the lot, so it is still in the neighborhood, matching the goal of the neighborhood zone. I do have a comment from some calls that I received, and I'll talk to the board just about short-term rentals and that their desire for short-term rental regulation, but, you know, as far as the city currently stands, we don't regulate short-term rental, this is a duplex for housing and a single family home for housing, which are both allowed in that zone, and he's meeting the setback requirements and everything, so.
Yeah, just to give you a little reassurance, you've heard Matt say that in that zone, on that size lot, theoretically, you could have 10 units, residential units, but realistically, it's highly unlikely that could happen because of lot coverage, because of the house that's there now, the house that he's going to build, you know, meeting space for septic tanks and leach fields, so to add, you know, seven more units would be, I think, I'm going to say it would be impossible to do, but.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thanks.
I mean, if people were talking about, asking about the short-term rental.
Yeah, so I was going to say, the comments I seem to get mostly were, you know, after having discussions with the owners and kind of explaining how, again, it's not part of the subdivision, it's not bound by the same covenants, just a desire for the city to kind of look more deeply into short-term rental regulations. I know it's something the council's kind of brought up, it was in the comp plan, so it is a project that will be coming up over the next 12 months. You know, whether it's regulations or starting with the registration, just to find out where and how many there actually are in the city, is yet to be decided, but, you know, that's a process that, you know, the planning board, planning office, and the council will be working through, trying to figure out what the right path forward is in terms of short-term rentals within the city. How much regulation is needed and, or how much should there be, what's useful, and just really kind of figuring out what the data is on how many there are and where they're at in the city.
Anything else? Are you here for this one, or?
I'm the wife.
Oh, okay, okay. So you're in favor, I'm guessing?
Yeah, I mean, I can, I'll come say something.
Sure.
It's kind of more just for reassurance, because I think there is just a lot of uncertainty there.
My name is Caitlin Lewis, I am part of the neighborhood as well. We are building, but we also own a house directly across the road from this unit, so I think there's a lot of calls and a lot of neighbors who are just concerned about it, and I get it, it does, it is a single family neighborhood, but again, our lot doesn't fall under the covenants, but we aren't building 10 units. We aren't building homes that don't meet the aesthetic of the neighborhood. They're nicely done, they're well thought out, and they are put in here for us, yes, to capitalize on, but they're not put in to disrupt the neighborhood. Our guests, if they come, they have to have their identity verified, so it's not just some random person who's coming, we don't know anything about them, have no idea who they are, and we have very strict regulations on our properties so that it's not just these random strangers coming in and walking in and disrupting the neighborhood. So I just think that there's just a lot of speculation and a lot of concern about that, and I get it, but I just want to maybe reassure, and also reassure that we are not going to build anything else on this property. Like you said, it would be impossible, very nearly impossible to build any other units on this lot particularly, and we are still undecided about the single family home. We don't know if we're going to move in there personally ourselves, if it will stay a rental as we presented to you, we're just right now, it's presenting to you what the intentions could be, so that everything is out in the open, there's no, nothing can come back like, oh, they lied and they weren't transparent about it. This is just things that we could do, and I just want to maybe put that all to sleep a little bit.
I mean, I think in the past, I mean, we've heard from neighbors on other projects, it didn't really, couldn't, wasn't really had to do with short-term rental, but that we were dealing with, but in the neighborhood, there were short-term rentals and were not very well managed by, I guess you consider, hosts.
Yeah.
You know, and I think, you know, a lot of people, that's what, you know, the big downside, the big negative aspect from the neighbors?
Yeah.
Is how well you manage your property.
Yeah, and I think the good thing to reassure, like I said, is that they do have to have their identity verified. It is verified, so they, they are actually people that like, they would be very stupid to come in and do something that would be illegal or disrupt or be anything like that. And we can, when we come back, if you need, I don't think it's needed, but we can give you like the regulations that we set for these people, if the neighbors need it or whatever, but it's just, I get it, like you said, I get it. But also, one other thing is that like, there is a triplex off the Beechland Road, there is a duplex off from Deerfield which connects to Grandview still. There's other rentals in this property that no one else seems to be questioning, it's just our places that people keep questioning. We're not really doing anything wrong, and we're also making them, some of them are even nicer than the ones that I just spoke of. So it's like, I don't know, just you try not to take it personally, but when no one's attacking anybody else, it kind of seems a little personal.
How do we understand what you mean in this context by a short-term rental?
Say that one more time, I didn't hear the beginning.
How long is a short-term rental?
So by, by, I think the definition of what a short-term rental is, is I think shorter than 14 days, and anything over 14 days is considered long-term, which people can rent for long-term also at our places. So there's no, I don't define it as short-term because they can rent it for longer. Right now, we have a property where someone's staying for a month. That's not a short-term, that's considered a long-term. So, but by regulation and definition, short-term is less than 14 days. So they can do that, but they can also rent longer.
How much longer?
I think the set that we have is, I believe it's 30 days. Yeah, just because you want to make sure that the property is being well-maintained and everything like that, so.
So am I safe in assuming that what you're talking about primarily is summer rentals?
We do rent year-round.
Yes.
Yeah, but primarily, our biggest influx is during the summertime. Yeah. But, I mean, we do have, like I said, we've gotten bookings all year long, so we get them throughout the winter, fine. Right now, the property, the duplex that is on 24 Grandview, which is the lot that's we're proposing here, hasn't had somebody in it for about a month and a half. So people are concerned about traffic, but in the wintertime, there's not really anyone who's there. So, yeah.
I think what's beneficial in your situation is that you live right across the street.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, that's the thing, like, we, safeties are concerned too. I have a young child, he just turned a year old, so I take into account people who come in there. I don't want just random people who are gonna, who are unsafe and gonna show up, like I, we're there to watch it. We have cameras there, we're right, literally, I can see into the window at the duplex that's right across the street.
I think that, I mean, the couple complaints that have come to the board are more for non-owner that doesn't live there.
Yeah.
You know, they're not occupying the house or, or across the street, they, you know, may live out of state, so.
Right, and that's the thing, we are, we, my husband and I, we've both been born and raised here. Like, this is our community, I went to Elsworth High School, he went to Mount Desert High School. We're a local small family who are just, like, under our regulations, we're trying to just capitalize on our property that we have and provide for our family, that's all we're trying to do. And if things arise where you guys start to regulate, or we have to register for our Airbnbs, or short-term, long-term rentals, whatever it may be, then we'll obliged by that. But right now, we're not doing anything wrong under our, under the regulations, under the guidelines of the city and everything like that. And I think that we are taking into account our neighbors by not building 10 units on the property, not doing anything crazy, we're just, we're building it, we have a duplex, a single family home. That's what we're doing.
So are there any high school rivalries still going on?
No. None anymore.
Okay, thank you.
But that's it, thank you.
Any other questions from you folks?
Again, I don't have a horse in this race, I'm just trying to think sort of similar situations through in the future, but it seems to me if there were a large rectangular area which had nine homes on it, and one lot that was not being used for that purpose, and that lot suddenly became available, that it might be advantageous, if possible, for a city planning board to be able to have the ability to annex that property or reconsider that property for what its next use is going to be. And I understand you say it's still residential, but it just doesn't apply to those covenants. But, you know, I could just imagine sort of a disjointed property that because of some historical reason, didn't fit into that larger community, but at some point, it seems like it would have made sense for it to fit into that based on the geography of the situation, right? Am I making any sense whatsoever?
I mean, I understand where you're coming from, I just think the idea of the city trying to like acquire, maintain control over a property like that is, A, I don't think we have the staff time to really commit to like doing that across the city, but also it's a bit of overreach of the government to take private land and try and force like certain uses or character on it. I mean, we do that through zoning in certain ways, and that's kind of our mechanism for doing that, but.
Yeah, but there's no real-time refinement if the zoning is sort of awkwardly zoned at one point, then that zoning sort of continues to be maintained rather than refined. Can opportunities present themselves?
I mean, in some situations, I can see that working, but again, like, this whole area is the neighborhood zone that still stands, so it's not as though the zoning would have changed anything that could happen on this lot that's, you know, currently happening, it's more of the private covenants that really have more restrictions on.
So the covenants are between the property owners and the original subdivision rather than any city regulations?
That's a private, yeah, private agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing. We'll close the public hearing. You want to do the motion, Rick, or put you to work? Rick?
Might be.
Turn your mic back on.
I turned my mic. Why am I so good here, you know?
You want to do the motion?
Oh, sure. Thank God I came here, right?
Yes.
Make the motion that the permitting plan review of a minor subdivision entitled Lewis subdivision for applicant Skyward Lewis be incomplete.
Is there a second?
Second.
Hold on, pay up. You can raise your hand, Rick. Thank you. Okay, unanimous. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You got it.
Awesome. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. We'll go to item number four, final plan review of a major use site plan entitled Synergium Elsir Solar for owner Samuel Robert Shay Giffen and applicant Synergium Elsir LLC. The proposal is to construct an approximately 10-acre solar site. Before I finish it, do we have to change that to actually is like a 5.5 acre?
Five and a half acres.
Should be 5.5 acres, yeah.
So the proposal is construct an approximately 5.5-acre solar site. The subject property is approximately 55 acres or so located on Maribel Road, map 51, lot 15-1 in the urban zoning district. Someone here representing Synergium.
Yep, my name is Evan Jones with Jones Associates. I was here before you folks a little over a year ago when this project was a 10-acre solar project.
We have to allow it and do some stuff.
And I've actually got Haleil on the phone as well. He's with Synergium Solar and is the actual applicant. So, yeah, when we were here with you folks last time, the, we came with a 10-acre solar site preliminary plan, and about a day before, we came before you folks, the PUC changed what they were looking for for solar projects, and they were looking for smaller projects. And because of that, we discussed the most likely scenario for this project would be to cut the scope of the project in half. There was some discussion with the city on possibly doing battery storage, but it's not zoned for that. You know, we didn't pursue rezoning for battery storage just because of some other circumstances and requirements through the PUC. So the application that's in front of you folks now is basically the same exact application that we'd submitted a little over a year ago with the output and size of the system basically cut in half. The design is covered through a decommissioning permit through the state, through DEP, as well as a stormwater permit by rule through DEP. Both of those permits have been updated for the new size and scope of the project as well. And then additionally, the only other minor change that we made to the plan, because of the size of the project and the original proposal, we had one place in the access road that was narrowed from the 20 feet that's typically required for that access. Because the size and the scope of the project is now smaller, we were able to widen that road back out to 20 feet for the entire length of it, which is what the fire department likes to see. So that's the only, other than the project being cut in half, that's the only sort of substantive change from when we were here a year ago.
I guess I'm a little surprised, I guess, when I look at the intent with this proposal. We talk about a 10-acre site, and now it's five, and I'm not sure I completely understand why.
So, yeah, and I'm not really on that end of things, and Haleil can probably actually explain a little bit better, but it's because of sort of PUC, what they're looking for for these commercial sites.
So it was a question of why it was reduced in size?
Exactly.
Yeah, it's just due to recent legislation that came out at the state level that requires projects to participate in the program that we were looking to have this project participate in. It used to have a maximum project size that would have required about 10 acres, and now they pretty much reduced it in half. So that's why we're reducing the project size.
I know when you originally came, there was, you talked about a time constraint from the state's side, which apparently, this is still timely that you can.
That program still has a state time constraint, correct, Haleil? Or is that different now?
It doesn't have the same time constraint it used to have, but it certainly, time is of the essence because, you know, with so much, all the recent activity at the state level with the legislation, who knows if, you know, more legislation will come out in the near future. So you certainly would want to move as quickly as possible, but it doesn't have, I know there, in previous iterations of the program, there were hard deadlines for permitting. I don't think that would apply to this particular project where it had to receive a permit by a certain date.
I think when, at the time when we were talking about it, they were in that transition period from one megawatt to, or two, two to one megawatts of reducing the size, and in order to fit under that program, they would have had to have the complete project built out by last year. So I think that's what, was what probably you're remembering.
I think I remember that.
And that wasn't really feasible.
That you were going to have to get it done by '24, the end of '24, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, if we would not be downsizing to one megawatt, then we would have had to have been built by the end of last year.
Okay.
And I believe there was a previous iteration in the program when it went from five megawatt to two megawatt that also had a deadline where I think you were grandfathered into the five megawatt if you had a permit issued by a certain date, but that's probably going back even further, a couple years back. But the most recent iteration downsizing from two megawatt to one megawatt had, would have had that deadline to have been built by the end of last year.
Questions from the board?
Just one, and probably it doesn't exactly relate to our role here, but does that reduction in half of your enterprise affect anything in terms of viability, completing the project, or any of those kinds of things?
Haleil, the question is, does the cutting it in half affect the viability of the project?
Not, not really. You know, it's still a viable project. It just, you know, it just, the costs, everything just kind of gets cut in half. So a lot of the costs are just based on the size. You know, there's a certain level that's fixed cost, but, you know, those are small enough that it wouldn't really make the project not viable.
And what about the schematics in terms of land used, you know, the distribution, the fencing, and all that sort of thing? How does that change?
Yeah, it pretty much, the developed area basically is cut in half. We were at 10 acres before. We're down to a little over five and a half. The access road is coming in through the same place, and the transformers and equipment are going to be in the same place. It's just that the panel area does not extend anymore further. It's less to the north and less to the west than it was before.
It's reducing the wetland impacts, too, by?
Yeah, I saw that, I noticed that, yeah.
Any questions, Rick?
Yeah, a couple, a couple of just clarification, everyone is an actual question. On your cover letter dated January 16th, about halfway done in that paragraph, there's a, at the very end of this, at the very end of the line, it says port, and then there's a hyphen, but it doesn't seem to follow to the next line. And I was just wondering whether there was anything interesting in what appears to be a missing line in that letter. Or not?
I think it's supposed to say post-technical review team.
Yeah.
It's a.
It says port.
I know, it's supposed to say post.
Post.
It's a typo, but I think it's supposed to say post-technical review team, so after the technical review team.
Okay, all right. So there was in fact, nothing interesting. Okay. On the waiver for the driveway, driveway, whatever you want to call it, I guess my question really to Matt is, I mean, I'm inclined to grant that, the vote in favor of granting a waiver, but I wanted to ask Matt especially, or whoever, whether or not that's the waiver for this particular kind of issue. Is that, have we done that in the past? Is that our practice?
You know, I honestly would say that there isn't a waiver necessary to a certain extent because we don't really have parking standards for solar projects.
Right.
So it's, it's, yeah, there's no waiver is actually necessary here.
So if there's no waiver actually necessary, we'll want to strike that or whatever. That does not need to be included in the, in the motion, correct?
Correct, yes. And so, yeah, the only discussion on the road really was for fire access, and that's, you know, we had a more complicated conversation when it was a larger project. It was a much simpler conversation this time around, that the road with, stays 20 feet and then it extends fully down through the panels.
Okay, so the fire guy is good for this as well?
I am.
I see your head bobbing up and down. I assume that that's a positive indication, right?
Oh, yes.
All right, okay. All right. The last one is just a comment on the USGS, and maybe it's really not your fault, but the USGS map that you use as a base map for the environmental review of fish and wildlife, that, that map is way the hell out of date since the road that you left to is not even shown on that map. So I was a little disturbed at first, like, what the hell?
Are you talking about that main department? Yeah, I, I think that, is that 103? My guess is that's, that may just be the state database that they use. And you're talking about.
The USGS map is like, you know, 20 years old.
Yeah, I guess you could take that up with main department of inland fisheries and wildlife. So.
They're my next stop. I could have said I'm a nasty guy. But anyways, my primary question was about the waiver, and that's the result, so I'm good. Thanks.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. On the landscaping buffer, or whatever you want to call it, on page 16, now, is it between the gravel road to one, to the Maribel Road, is that what you're saying, it's 100 feet to the east of the array? So is it 100 feet from the gravel road to Maribel Road, or is it?
Yeah, it would be, let's see what my scale is here.
How many feet?
So.
It looks like it's more going by the scale.
It's 120 feet there. I think what we were talking about, yeah, where the, where the, where the road comes up and turns and goes parallel with Maribel Road.
Right.
That's, that's about 160 feet from Maribel Road where it turns and goes.
Now, I don't want to hear it said that, I mean, you wouldn't be doing any cutting in between the gravel road and Maribel Road, is that correct?
We'd be cutting some for shading and snow, snow removal, but there'd be.
I mean, because you're basically using natural vegetation trees as the buffer.
So at a minimum there, it sort of tapers out where the road comes in and makes that turn. We, so at the beginning where it makes a turn, we've got about 50 feet we're leaving there, and then it extends and grows in distance as the road heads away from that turn.
I guess I'm just concerned about, I mean, if you're using that as a buffer, you know, because sometimes woodcutters have a tendency to get over into where they're not supposed to cut. And I'm, I'm not really sure, you know, how wooded that is now, if it actually, if it, if this vegetation remains at 50 feet, is that a good buffer, or are these all four, four-foot, five-foot pine trees and fir trees?
When I've driven by, it's pretty forested. They're tall trees, and I don't know exactly what kind they are.
Okay.
You go by at 50 miles an hour, I wouldn't know exactly what they were either. But, yeah.
It's, and you're a resident.
I drive by it every day.
Born, you don't know what a pine tree is?
I live on 180 right now, so.
Fur, spruce?
At 50 miles an hour, I'm not looking that closely.
I think it is fir and spruce right now. And when they do, when they do the layout for tree clearing, that's usually flagged. The limited disturbance in the clearing limits are typically flagged for those contractors.
So is it safe to say that that buffer is pretty effective in screening the air development? I mean, that's kind of the bottom line, right?
Yeah, I mean, that was the intent with leaving as much as possible there.
With all the fence around it.
Well, once it's constructed, will you actually be able to see it for any length of time if you drive by in a paved road?
You, you would most likely be able to see it as you drive by the access road, looking in the access road.
Right.
But once you're past that access road, I, I don't think, you know, it may be visible depending on times of the year, portions of it. I can't say 100% one way or another, but, you know, we tried to leave as much as possible.
Leave as much natural vegetation as you can there in terms of, you know, screening it off, so.
Yeah, I agree with Rick. I'm just wondering, I'm not trying to tell you how you design your project, but if you've been, projects have been cut in half in terms of what you can do, what's the possibility of moving that access road back a little bit and, you know, putting more of a buffer between the road?
So we, they do clear to the, they try and clear to the, to the west and south as much as possible. So we were sort of shoehorned in with the wetlands on either side. It, you know, I guess what's stopping us is we're, we're gonna, if we slide it further that way, we'd be actually up against the wetlands on the other side.
The wetlands, yeah.
You had 10 acres to develop, and you were bumping up against the wetland barrier, which is fine. What if you put the project a little further, the beginning, the front end of the project, meaning the first four or five acres, back further and still maintain the barrier to the wetlands?
Yeah, I mean, this is the flattest part of the property. So, you know, the intent was to keep it as, the footprint as minimal as possible.
Bring it back.
I think with what you're talking about, we would have to extend the length of the project.
Yeah.
Not necessarily in width, but.
I think also, if you move the project anywhere, you know, further towards one property line, like to, I guess is the north, maybe make closer to the wetlands, too. I think just keeping, you know, you're thinking of the buffer from the road.
Okay, I'll try one more time. I'm not being clear, I guess.
Yeah.
If you're cut, just be simple. You've got 10 acres, and you're cutting them in half, okay? Why couldn't the front half between, you know, the road and so on be gone and the access road and so on and so forth be back a little bit further from the main road?
Yeah, that's, I think I know what you're saying, and I think, but no, either way you do that, you're moving it closer to these wetlands up here. I think keeping this naturally buffered is more important than, you know, just making sure it's completely further from the road. I mean, I think it should be pretty clear, it should be pretty not visible from the road if you leave the natural buffer that's there as long as the fence that's going in. I mean, if you can see it from the driveway or in the wintertime a little bit, you know, can't help that necessarily all the time, but it's, it's pretty well-covered there. I think leaving the lot, most of the lot closer to the wetlands as undisturbed as possible would be more important.
I mean, right now, we're leaving a buffer that varies from 50 to 200 feet from Maribel Road. You know, obviously, you can't, there's places you can put that project. One of the constraints. One of the constraints is the further north you move on the project, there is a knoll up there. And there are slope restrictions on these pan- panels. Um, so the way we have it right now. Um, the northernmost, most point of those panel areas is just up against that knoll. And it requires really minimal grading to meet the slope restrictions, um, if, if any at all. If we go up on that knoll, we would require additional earth moving and grading. In more disturbed area, so, um, it's, uh, the southern part of the site is flatter. So it's, it's more ideal, especially with these tracking units where they actually have a pivot access. They're a little restricted on the slope that you can put them on.
Actually, Vince, this is the site plan from the original one.
Yep.
10 acres. So, I mean, it's gone, they've cut off this part. So, I mean, if they, if the original plan is still as close to the road as the current plan is.
Right.
So, and you have these wetlands that, I, I understand what you're saying. This, this half has been cut off, but there's really no way to push it.
Okay, so, um, I was talking about cutting it all horizontally. And what's happening is in fact, it's being cut off vertically. Yeah, that's, and that's fine, I understand. So it's, it's half here.
I couldn't miss it.
It's both half this way.
Yep.
Okay. I apologize for taking up your time.
Uh, on page 22, under the financial assurance, uh, at the bottom of the first paragraph says, "Financial assurance provisions must be noted on the final, final site plan and must be transferred with the development of this whole." And just exactly what wording goes on the site plan. We're talking about the entire, uh, decommissioning plan, the financial assurance. That is at the end of the, your book. I'm starting on page 146.
Yeah, let me just double check, cause I do reference the financial assurances on the plan.
So, yeah, what we did in order to not, I guess, take up and put an entire contract on the plan was we, we added, um, note, uh, I think it's 13, uh, which references, the performance standards for those financial assurances on the plan. So referencing back to your ordinance.
Yeah, cause the, I mean, the decommissioning plan is gonna be signed by you, but I'm under 3.1 financial assurance. I mean, it's up to the city to decide, right, whether it's a performance bond, surety bond, letter of credit.
Right.
Parent, company guaranteed. But, um, this, I mean, it's about a four-page document.
Yeah, no, I mean, so for all the reasons that we've done historically so far is, um, you know, the city can decide. Usually I let the applicant just give me what they prefer and if it's a bond or something like that, as long as the bank's willing to sign off on it. Then I have the attorney read it and then I sign off on it once I get the clearance from the attorney.
You're talking about the city attorney. I'm, that's what we've done in the past.
From the city attorney.
Okay.
But I don't think we've ever report, like, so I think the reference is okay, um, to that part of the ordinance that requires it on the plan. But without putting the full details onto the plan.
Kind of along the same line, uh, I kind of have a question on, on the, um, maintenance plan.
24-hour maintenance plan.
Yeah, I mean, is, is that kind of a side agreement too, or, I mean, to put all of that on the site plan too?
Yeah, I wouldn't say it's a side agreement. It's in the file itself, so it's provided for publicly too. But it's also, you know, making sure the information is with the fire department. That's the most important piece. That they just know that they have their 24-hour contact on file, um, for emergencies. And then, you know, again, if the city has that in multiple places, the better for redundancy, but it doesn't need to be on the plan itself.
Just so it's someplace in the file.
It's in the planner file and the fire department will also have the contact information.
Okay. I can't tell you what page it is, but appendix D references the financial capacity. And, you know, it's about a third of the way through. On the second paragraph, we confirm, this is from, signed by Greg Felton, CEO of Altus Power. We confirm that on September 19th, 2024, Altus signed a letter intending to finance and acquire the project after Synergen has met certain project milestones. I guess, what are the certain project milestones? Is Altus Power financing this after it's built? After it's half-built? After, at what point Altus has said, okay, you know, we have a balance sheet of, of $2 billion and we're gonna finance this, but at what point? Cause it doesn't seem like they're financing it day one. So who finance, who is financing it day one?
So, uh, Synergen puts up all the financing for the development capital. Then once all the approvals are received, uh, which, uh, would be, you know, the biggest one would be this permit approval. Uh, and then, uh, the interconnection agreement needs to be signed. And, uh, that's currently undergoing the facility study review right now by Versen. And those are the two main approvals that we need to obtain. And then, once we have all the approvals that raise our construction, at that point, Altus Power would provide the, the construction and long-term financing for the project.
Okay, so you said their financing will start prior to groundwork?
Yeah.
They will cover everything?
Yeah, they will find the construction financing.
Okay. So, I mean, I would say at this point, you know, cause what I was getting at was, you know, do we need a financial, a, a letter of financial capacity up to that point, but it kind of sounds like.
If Synergen's paying.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we don't need a letter from the applicant saying they'll pay for a project up to a certain point, as long as they have the funding to show that they're, cause they're already at this point really, but also like, they have the funding for this point and beyond is what's most important.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is the first time we've kind of come across that, that.
Yeah. It wasn't being funded.
By the applicant.
Process also wasn't being funded through that funding mechanism.
And it, talked about, uh, there's gonna be fencing around it. And I, I was kind of interested in, uh, also inland fishing wildlife, appendix I. When they talk, uh, page three, they talk about wildlife permeable fencing, which is, the way they describe it is a little bit different than, than the fencing that, that Synergen was gonna do. I think Synergen was gonna do, uh, six-inch gaps.
Yeah.
On the ground. I'm, I'm kind of curious as to, I mean, this is the first time I've seen inland fishing wildlife reference this type of fencing.
Yeah.
Kind of curious why it wouldn't go with that.
Well, we wrote the solar ordinances a couple of years ago now, but we were using the Autobahn suggested fencing, which is the six-inch gaps. Um, you know, the applicant has to meet the Ellsworth ordinance. This is just a recommendation for mild, fish and wildlife. You know, I don't know if in that time period now, seven inches is like best practice for fencing as opposed to six inches, but we've adopted six inches.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, too bad inland fishing wildlife didn't, well, maybe they did, we, we just weren't aware of it. I kind of liked their wording. I've got a question about the operation plan. I think that's it. Any other questions from the board? Right here. A little bit of public hearing. I guess we don't have anybody on the line or, okay.
Nobody called about this one.
Close a couple here. Uh, anything else from staff?
No, I mean, I appreciate they filled out the preliminary checklist again. And it was very detailed with citations where they had everything and then I just filled out the final checklist that you all received. Uh, which didn't add too much, so, um, very thorough project.
So, uh, to accept this, is there anything other than reading off item number four? Do we have to?
No, it's, it's just a, um, final approval, no waiver or anything.
Nothing to add.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you want to do that one again, Rick?
Yeah, I, I, what did, what did you just say about the waiver?
Just no waiver as we discussed for the parking.
Oh, right, okay, alright, there, alright, good enough. Uh, so, uh, make a motion that the final plan review is approved of a major use. Site plan entitled Synergen Ellsworth Solar for owner Samuel Robert Shay Giffen and applicant Synergen Ellsworth LLC.
Uh, is there a second?
I second.
Okay, all in vain. Okay, thank you, Rick. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tell your friends how nicely it works.
Yeah, yes, it's been a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks.
Alright.
Discussion on upcoming ordinance work.
Yeah, so we kind of touched on it a little bit with the one project. I'm pretty sure we will be looking at a, uh, short-term rental registration at some point in the next couple of months. You know, whether that's the registration with a fee or just the registration that makes people, you know, show, again, could provide data essentially of where they're at. You know, how many there are, where they are in the city. We can kind of map that out as a staff. And get a better handle on, you know, there's a lot of talk about short-term rentals, but again, exactly what is their impact? Is it as dramatic as people say it is? If it's not, you know, how can we help people, like, educate? Like, what are the benefits of short-term rentals are? If it does send a team to indicate that it is impacting the housing stock significantly, uh, then how do you address that? What's appropriate way? Again, most of these short-term rentals are around Branch Lake. That's fine, you know, like having vacation homes and summer rentals like that is not impacting the urban housing stock. Most of them are downtown or in neighborhoods areas where you want people to have single-family homes. It's just a broader discussion of then, okay, well, we know that it's not really the root cause of the housing shortage, but is it contributing to it at all? So we'll probably be having discussions more thoroughly about that in the coming months.
Uh, Matty, we all know, I think, the island is having major problems with housing shortage and short-term rentals and so on. Uh, has there been much consideration of looking at that issue versus what we have here?
Yeah, and like, they're, I don't know that they've gotten necessarily to the heart of the data of where, whether or not, how much of an impact short-term rentals have specifically. And Far Harbor probably has, they did do this data collection and, uh, have a process for how to handle it. But for Ellsworth, it's also, you know, it's just general cost of construction is high, the cost of housing is high due to shortage. And, you know. If, you know, short-term rentals didn't create that, you know, people are buying them and using them because no one else is buying them necessarily. Prices were already high. Um, so like, again, what's the correlation exactly? How much of an impact is the short-term rental market actually having on the housing market? Um, but new construction is expensive due to labor and material costs. And then, you know, like, I bought a house recently for probably double what it was worth four years ago. And I'm just, you know.
I know that feeling.
Part of me is like, you know, maybe I take a loss on this house for the market to go back to what it was, but I don't think most people would think that.
Yeah.
So it's also just the nature of that market in particular. Um, it's a complex issue though. It's not like there's one solution to it or one issue that.
I mean, any estimates on, when we're working on that? Cause we've got the marijuana ordinance coming up and I know the city's.
Yes.
Starting to be into a full-blown budget process.
Yeah, so it'll be, you know, we will have a budget process coming up in March. There is the first, the joint workshop between the planning board and the council to look at marijuana. Uh, we don't really have a rush timeline for that, so if, you know, another priority comes up, that may be something that gets pushed a little bit out. The marijuana project, but that could also happen very quickly too. It's not a, we, this, the town was only looking at, uh, retail adult use sales. So it's not as complicated as if we're doing growing, uh, operations or cultivation, or cultivation and testing as well. So that's coming up as well. There's also tweaks to the ordinance. You know, we've had this site distance issue come up, uh, for certain projects that we may want to look at, whether or not our standard is actually a good standard. Or if we want to go to a more MDOT standard for, that's engineered actually and not just kind of a blanket that at one point maybe was considered a good standard, but no longer is. Um, you know, lighting has always been a conversation of a piece that we need to look at in the ordinance. Our lighting situation doesn't really make sense mathematically sometimes when you try to work it out. So just changing it to match dark sky compliance, which is usually something we grant a waiver for anyway, if people want to use dark sky standards. It's just kind of the industry standard for lighting.
I mean, I think when we just established site distances, I mean, it was a kind of one-size-fits-all.
Right, yeah.
Versus the MDOT site distance that are engineered.
Right. And so, right, there just, there are parts of the ordinance that could make more sense or maybe just need to be updated because again, this ordinance was written. I mean, it was pretty much ahead of its time when it was written, but it's now been like 2012 since the bulk of it was designed and created. So, um, it's time to freshen it up in certain areas, so. Over the next year, there would be a lot of, trying to batch these so that when we do updates fully, you know, there's also the smell issue that's come up. I don't think the planning board will have to address that. It seems like the council just wants to create a separate ordinance outside of chapter 56. For that piece of it. Um, but then there is the portion of chapter 56 that may be edited to at some point.
Well, not getting ahead of ourselves, but I would, I would expect that marijuana ordinance, there would be something in there on orders.
Uh, yeah, I mean, you're not allowed to smoke it, uh, at any of these places, so, and you're not growing it, so.
No, what I know, I mean, uh, there's probably ones that were maybe manufacturing it or more processing it more on-site. That, I mean, you could drive by and it's like, whoa, I mean, just, it'd knock you over, but I mean, you could go up to.
Curly.
Curly now and you don't smell anything.
Right.
That's not to say that whoever does establish stores operates as odor-free as Curly. So I think that, I mean, kind of getting ourselves, but I mean.
Jimmy, they aren't manufacturing it anyway. They're just.
No, I, so I mean, to John's point, it might not hurt to just be more cautious. It's half of the standard within the ordinance as we write it. Um, but I do believe because the, the retail goods that people will be selling will be prepackaged, there will not be quite as much of an odor issue as if it were manufacturing or growing.
No, so the workshop we have with the council, uh, will there be somebody there from the state to kind of say, guide us or?
No, we're, so we're kind of beyond that. The council has had a couple of workshops prior to me actually being planner on cannabis. Um, it's really finding out the technical side of, not the technical side, but like, how many permits would they want to give for these types of facilities? Do they want, you know, is the planning board think it's a good idea to have like, um, co-location restrictions? So like, you can't have a liquor store and a marijuana facility in the same, like, strip mall or next to each other within a certain distance. Safety things like the state has a 500 or 1,000, I can't remember off the top of my head, but feet from a school, you can't have a facility. So that stuff would already be built into it. But I don't know if having someone from the state would be that as helpful. I will have them, and they review the ordinance, um, before we, before I bring it to you all. Once we get to that stage. But having them come to talk, like, the regulations are set, I mean, pretty straightforward. Like, I have a list of the things that the state wants you to include, so.
Yeah, okay.
It's more about figuring out what the city actually wants out of it.
So, Matt, this has just helped me, cause I have tremendous problems with my calendar all the time.
Yeah.
We were having, wasn't there a meeting, I've noticed, said, I don't have a potential meeting around this issue?
Yes, I think March 6.
March 6, okay.
6 P.M.
6 or 16?
No, it's the 6.
Well, that's our.
March 6.
That's our normal meeting date too, actually.
Oh, right, okay. So we're gonna do it at this me, at this meeting?
No, I don't think, it was scheduled without consulting me, so I might have to have them adjust that meeting, but, or, yeah. Or we could move our meeting.
No, the, I mean, the workshop is on a Thursday.
It was on a Thursday, that's what I thought, okay.
Yeah.
So I, I did see the date and I was like, yeah, it shouldn't be a problem. So maybe it's the, if the 6 is our meeting, that's the 7th. If the 5th is our meeting in March, it's the 6th.
Okay.
The 5th is the planning board.
Okay, the 5th is the.
6 is the cannabis workshop.
Okay.
At 6 P.M.
Right.
Got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry for the confusion.
Oh, I have another question. I lost it.
I think it's under here.
Yeah.
It's all about cannabis?
Uh, I don't, I don't know. Oh, maybe, but I had one on housing. We had a meeting scheduled last week, but that was canceled.
Oh, yeah, there's the Housing Task Force meeting. I had to, I've put a break on that just so I can figure out somehow some other things in the city are working, but those meetings should continue again soon. Get our feet under us with the current staffing situation.
Where are we with the appeals project?
There is a Board of Appeals meeting tomorrow night to discuss the timeliness of the appeal. And that's the only issue that's up to this discussion. So if the board, so in the ordinance, if an appeal is turned in late, the Board of Appeals should discuss whether or not there's a good reason for it being turned in late and whether or not they'll hear the appeal. That was missed at the last meeting, and because procedural, they can just go back to look at it without a certain timeframe. So they're looking at tomorrow night to hear the argument from the appellant to see if, you know, what the reasons for turning in late were. And then hearing from the developer to see if they, you know, their counterargument to it essentially of why they should have decided not to listen to the appeal originally. No one moves forward from there if they vote, you know, that the appeal, if there was a good reason why it was late, then everything kind of just stands as it was. But if not, they may have to procedurally figure out what to do after that.
Okay, what about, I need to bring it up, what about the courthouse project?
I mean, right now, it's moving forward on the, you know, the city's working out the final contract details with the state and the Ward Wells to negotiate the land swap. And then just assure, like, the state wants assurances that the road will be built if they do move to that site and that sort of thing. So just figuring out contract details on that. But right now, it's still moving forward as the courthouse will be off of High Street.
Anything else? Anything on the staff comment? Kind of rolled everything into five and six.
Covered everything so far with the ordinance updates. The comp plan is still being reviewed by the state. So that should be over in March is, I think, the deadline for us to hear back whether or not the state accepts it or not.
Anything, Rick?
Whichever one. You go, Rick.
Whichever one you want.
Okay, motion for adjournment?
I so move.
So move.
Good. Well done.
Thank you.
Thanks.